The lawn shaw's not a drug off.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to see each and every one of you. Are we ready, uh, Mountain City Club?
Yes.
All right, we'll turn it over into your very capable hands.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, February ninth. And we have appeals requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on Dolphin Street on April the tenth from seven thirty to eleven P M. Did we forget to put the minutes on? Are the minutes ready? Can we send them too?
I don't have an issue.
Um, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on April fourth, um, from six A M. until one P M. And this has been Lang Park.
That's fine. It's for an Easter service.
And, um, we do have approval of minutes from February second. Public hearing today is a public hearing to rezone property located at nineteen oh one Hotel South Side of Hotel Street, two hundred and ten feet west of Prairie Avenue from R one to R three. Public hearing to declare the structure at nineteen Elizabeth Place of public nuisance and/or demolished at three oh seven Gaston Street, nineteen fifty nine Motown Street, sixteen eighteen Bryan Avenue, eleven fifty one Alba Street, twelve oh seven Michigan Avenue, seven oh nine South Carolina Street, seven oh nine Mandrell Street. Uh, public nuisance is in or in them secured and demol- and are demolished. Public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at twenty six sixty five Vetbee Street, eleven sixty two Brussels Street, and eleven oh four Park Street. Retention of petitions and other communications to the council. Um, Reggie Hill has signed in. Um, he's addressing matters related to the Mobile Planning Commission, their general recommendations made to the city council and property usage in the city as well as, um, previously submitted, um, requests. COVID nineteen items held over sixty four zero zero four ordinance to rezone property located at fifteen ninety and fifteen seventy four Saint Stevens Road and fifteen sixty three Basil Street from B three and R one to B three. Sixty four zero zero five ordinance to rezone property located at forty five eighty three Cypress Business Park Drive from B three and B five to B five.
No problem.
Sixty five zero zero six ordinance to amend chapter sixty four of the city code to create chapter sixty five relating to urban forestry, the tree commission, and tree protection and management.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a two o'clock administrative services committee meeting that will, um, deal with this this afternoon. Everybody is invited and you should have, um, uh, two pieces of information, one Lisa sent out and then Chris's, um, information about what's different in, um, the original ordinance that we were looking at and, uh, what we will see on today as well, what is on the agenda, agenda now that we'll talk about during the committee meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And thank you to the members of this committee.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, I, uh, Ms. Gregory, I will not be able to be in attendance, uh, at the meeting this afternoon. I think we've all heard, at least I have heard from my appointee to the tree commission. And, and it appears that some of the members of the tree commission have two issues. One is they don't like seeing it moved to its own section from the planning section. And, and the other is they feel that the, um, that the proposed ordinance, the substance of the proposed ordinance, uh, does not go far enough to protect trees. And, and, and I think what they're arguing is that it, it, it is, uh, less robust than the current ordinance is. So if we could get some feedback on those two issues today in committee meeting, um, I'd, I'd appreciate it. As I say, I'm not going to be able to be there, but, uh, those appear to be the two issues. At least my representative on the tree commission brought to my attention.
Yeah, we have heard from, um, some members of the tree commission and I forwarded you all, um, something that I had received. They have been invited to, um, be on the Zoom meeting. I don't know how many will actually be on the Zoom meeting. Peter Toller will also be on the meeting and, um, not sure about Shayla Becco, but she probably will be there as well since, of course, you know, she oversees the planning department. So, yeah, should be a good conversation.
If I could weigh in too as well, I am a committee member. Thank you. I, I will be attending. And, um, yeah, we've gotten a lot of correspondence on this, especially from the tree commission. Their vice president wrote a very good, um, you know, synopsis of their concerns. I, I'm hoping all council people have received that information because it will help direct, um, some of the commentary. The, um, the idea that it's moving out of the zoning or, or land use, um, is an issue for continuity, especially when it comes to, um, I guess, land disturbing permits and what is permitted with that in engineering versus, um, an urban forester, uh, art, urban forester overlooking the property prior to those, uh, going out based on the new code and also the change of the diameter of the tree, um, diameter of the tree rather, um, based in heritage areas of our city or and/or the rest of the city. So those were some discussions, um, I've been pretty too and interested in. And, um, again, there's, um, a lot of good coming forward with this because I know our, our urban forester has been, um, involved, but I think all that information hopefully at this committee meeting can, can be given out and maybe some clarification or maybe some tweaking that has to go on with the language. It is an ordinance and I wanted to assure or, or get with, um, whoever is responsible for advertising it. There are certain guidelines when you, uh, change an ordinance that it be advertised. And so I wanted to make sure that that's been done. I know it's been on the city's website and people, uh, can kind of surf around and look for it, but was it advertised appropriately for the timeline that an ordinance needs to be advertised? Would that be coming from our clerk's office or through the, uh, planning, uh, build mobile department responsible for advertising?
We did.
You did? Okay. And so it's made all the benchmarks for advertising.
Yeah, I thought I saw it in, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Good. It's good to know. Looking forward to the meeting. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a precursor, uh, to the ni- to the meeting as well. It almost feels like a committee meeting at this point. Uh, my, my only concern, I've heard all the concerns and they're, and they're all valid, is that, uh, it appears to me that we are going to give the, uh, the arborist, the urban forestry director, whatever we label that person, the, the authority that used to lie with the, uh, with the tree commission. And it may just be my perception, uh, but I would say that the administration is never out of the equation, no matter how our ordinance is written, and they'll always have some authority in, in, uh, in dealing with especially emergency situations. Uh, but, but I think it's very important that the council's voice on the tree commission is, uh, left intact with its authority. And I'm just not convinced that this, uh, that this is doing that. I think it's taken away. No matter where you write it, I, I don't have a problem with it being a separate ordinance, but I do have a problem with it not recognizing the tree commission as the, the authority when it comes to planning and, um, and getting waivers. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. President.
Listen, Mr. Davis.
I, I, I concur in principle with Mr. Williams. I, I really don't have any concern with respect to moving it out of the, moving it into its own section and out of the planning section. The, the question I think is, um, you know, whether, how, what, what powers exist under the new ordinance compared to the old ordinance? And if there's less, is that a good idea? Those kinds of issues, which I think we can probably work through fairly easily. So I look forward to the dis- discussion and I know that, uh, Ms. Gregory will, uh, handle it in her usual excellent manner.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I agree with John also. Just saying.
Well, well, and hey, I, I concur with that assessment as well. I've heard from, um, my appointee to the tree commission and from, uh, some very passionate and impassioned, uh, citizens in District Two concerned about trees and heritage oats and, and canopies and things of that nature. And so I'm gonna do my best to be on the committee meeting and, and if we could get some feedback specifically from them as to their concerns, uh, I think it would really help us try to pass something that everybody can at least live with. Uh, thank you again, Ms. Gregory, for taking on this task and, uh, keep up, keep up great work with the administrative services committee. Uh, Mountain City Club.
Zero seven zero zero seven ordinance pertaining to animal tethering.
All right, I think, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Uh, thank, thank you. What we want to do this morning, uh, we just gonna, um, take zero zero seven off the table and replace it with a substitute ordinance that's already is in hand of, hands of the city club. And council members, we've, we've already received a, a copy of it and I move on.
Okay, we, we gonna, I, I, sorry, but coming back to the, to the, to the tree, are we gonna carry that over for what, a week or two?
Well, um, you know, I don't know how long we'll need to do it. I guess today's discussion will certainly show us kind of where we are in discussion mode. Um, we can wait and do that next week or make a guess today. Whatever, whatever, you know, the will is.
It is, no, this, this is held over, so we would have to hold it over. We have to act on it.
Okay, yeah, um, maybe two weeks.
Let's just do two weeks. What do you say?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Hey, and on the animal tethering, Fred, does that mean that we're gonna, we're gonna table, we're gonna table this one, zero seven zero seven, and there's a new one?
No, no.
This is the correct one.
Okay, this is the correct one.
Yes, with the thirty-two degrees.
So we can go ahead and act on this, Fred.
Okay, so we don't, we don't, we just act on this one? Okay?
And this has been advertised as well?
We substituted it last week.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have to advertise an ordinance unless it's the same one.
Okay, thank you.
That was essentially why we held it up for an extra week to give people time to-
Oh, that's what I remember now. Correct. To give people time to read it.
Okay, zero eight, zero eight zero six two approved purchase order to Air Gas USA for ten respirator kits. Zero eight zero six three approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck. Zero eight zero six four approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales for three Ford F two fifty trucks. Zero eight zero six five approved purchase order to Dream Seat for furniture for fire station. Zero nine zero six six appropriate monies from the twenty twenty Alabama Municipal Government Trust allocation to various capital projects. Twenty one zero six seven authorized contract with Southern Earth Sciences for biannual groundwater sampling, statistical evaluations, and groundwater monitoring reports for both Bates C and D landfill and Hickory Street landfill. Twenty one zero six eight authorized contract with DOT Construction Services for twenty nineteen miscellaneous drainage repairs. Thirty one zero six nine authorized fifty twenty assistance to firefighters grant. Sixty zero eight zero approved settlement agreement with John Patricia Burke concerning, um, seventeen seventy-five Pike Avenue, eighteen oh one Pike Avenue and twenty-three twenty Boykin Boulevard. Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time, fifty seven zero zero eight ordinance to amend chapter fifty-seven of the city code to add a new code section for food trucks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
The fina- the finance committee met and, uh, listened to, uh, public input on this particular ordinance. And, uh, after it met, decided to basically keep what had originally been proposed, but changed the setback to a hundred and fifty feet from any restaurant seating area. And that's what, that's what this fifty seven zero zero eight does. Uh, this is its first appearance on the agenda, so I imagine it's gonna, uh, hold over and we can act on it next week.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Very good for it. Great for it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Thank you very much.
Fifty seven zero zero nine ordinance to amend chapter fifty-seven, Article eight, the city code, and to add a new Article nine small cell facilities on public rights of way.
If I could comment on that?
Ms. Rich?
Um, I know we're under a deadline in order to meet the state. Um, I guess they gave permission for cities or municipalities to have above what the state is offering in this industry for placement, but I was, I am concerned about the height in residential zone properties and how close they can be together. Does any, I asked that question and received an answer. I don't know if the answer went back to everyone, but I, I was correct in reading and interpreting that line. So is there anyone else that has concerns about seeing thirty-five foot towers and every two hundred feet in rights of way in residential areas?
Yeah, I, I thought what Ms. Kessler said was that we really didn't have any choice. It was a federal-
I thought you said that too.
I, I, I don't.
It's, i- i- if I may, excuse me, thank you very much, Ms. Rich. The thirty-five feet is in the current, uh, city ordinance. The state ordinance would be, um, fifty feet and taller. So, uh, that is, the thirty-five feet is the current standard. And, and that was, that, that was an issue that was debated, uh, in twenty seventeen when the city adopted the current ordinance.
Yeah, that, that's really, uh, and then it talks about the aesthetics. So, um, who handles that aspect of it, um, that it has to fit in with the aesthetics? Because if there, if there are neighborhoods that have underground power to all of a sudden see a lot of poles, um, you know, it's really out of character. Um, or, or, d- does the infrastructure get buried when, when they already have underground service for their utilities?
It, well, of course, these are antennas, so they don't work underground and, um,
But how tall do they have to be? Do they have to be thirty-five feet if everything else is underground? They, it was hard to interpret what the aesthetics meant. And there wasn't talk about underground stuff. So-
And have an underground antenna.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
And have an underground antenna.
Uh, since twenty seventeen, when the, uh, city adopted its last ordinance, uh, the federal requirement is now that aesthetic, uh, standards be published in advance. So this ordinance, uh, is, uh, as I said in my email, it's modeled after the ordinances that have been adopted by Huntsville and Birmingham and, I believe, Tuscaloosa and Orange Beach. So there, uh, uh, so it's, it's based on what's being done throughout the state. Now, having said that, um, of course, the ordinance was tweaked to the circumstances in the, uh, city of Mobile and, um, on aesthetic standards, that might be something that the council wants to review the specific provisions that, that are in the draft before you. You know, my thought is that, uh, the council, you know, if, if the council were to act on this draft within a month, that would be very comfortable to, uh, have an updated ordinance in advance of the May one, twenty twenty-one deadline.
Right.
I, 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 and I'm very comfortable in saying that the council would not be happy if the city weren't, by any stretch of imagination, subject to the provisions in the state act because they're-
No, right. Oh, definitely. We, we do better by having our own, but I was just wondering whether there was any play on the two hundred feet and the, the height in, in R one zoned areas.
The two hundred, the two hundred feet?
No, yeah, the two hundred feet apart, yeah.
The two hundred feet of separation that, that, that was suggested by the right of way department after reviewing the, uh, ordinances and other, you know, and other municipalities. But that, you know, that if the, uh, council wants to discuss that in a committee meeting, you know, that, that, that is not set in so, set in stone, but what is set in stone is that the city has to allow, uh, polls on rights of way. That, you know, that's required by federal law.
Right. Okay. They can't be on, they can't be on the mast of the streetlights or in, on traffic signals, correct? That was proposed as a no-go?
Uh, no, the ordinance, uh, requi- prefers co-location. Those, what you're describing would be co-location.
I see.
That is provided for in the ordinance.
Oh, I thought that they were not allowed to go on those, on the mast of the light, you know, to interfere. But, okay, well, I'll keep reading it, but, um, I, I just, um, and you're saying it's exactly what's in Huntsville or are you saying it models close to Huntsville and to our other peer cities?
It's extremely close to Huntsville and Birmingham, but, you know, on some of the specifics, I don't know what the separation distance is exactly in Huntsville. We, we can certainly look at that. I know we have looked at, we have looked at all of that, but
Uh-huh.
the general structure with the annual licensing and the annual fees, uh, and a lot of the provisions really, uh, the processing of applications has all just like Huntsville and Birmingham. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. So it's more, it's more just the placement so that it absorbs into, um, especially residential areas, I think is probably going to be a concern of our citizens, you know, to see something like that right out their front door might possibly upset them as much as they would like to have the convenience of the faster, you know, internet service. It still is something that if we can make it fit into those neighborhoods better, citywide, not just saying out in six, but citywide will, will help to stabilize our neighborhoods. So I, I think we should compare for sure what the other cities are doing near us.
Let, let, Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, I believe that, um, Ms. Kessler already told us, um, the height is already in our ordinance. And it was argued in twenty seventeen that it was too high and the council passed. It's already in our ordinance. They're not changing that. And she also told us that cities that didn't have an ordinance, the state gonna make it two hundred, they're gonna take it higher than that. We are blessed that we already have an ordinance. And our ordinance gives them the right, go with the height that, that's all, that's, that's recommended. Not the two, not, not the thirty-five feet, it's, it's already in the ordinance. So we, we can't, it's nothing we can do about that because if we didn't have an ordinance, it would be higher than that. But thank God we have one and we can have, we can keep the thirty-five feet. But to try to lower to twenty-five, we're not gonna be able to do that. By the twenty feet, we're not gonna be able to do that. We got, we, they allow us to go, go along with what our ordinance say. It says thirty-five feet. So we can target in and that's what, that's what it is.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I, I have some questions for Ms. Kessler. The flow, the, the provisions, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, the, the provisions in the new ordinance. What I've seen these companies want to do is just put these poles wherever the heck they want to put them and, and where they ought to be putting them, you know, when we went through this, the last time we went through this, which was that, uh, they, they need to co-locate when they can co-locate and they need to put the poles in the least obtrusive place they can find and still get what they need. Um, but I, there are a couple of instances where, uh, residents have called me and, uh, and there have been people out there surveying from these utility companies and just want to put a pole, you know, in, in kind of really, uh, inappropriate places. And I know I'm being very vague about this, but it, it, let me put, let me ask this question. Do, u- under, under the federal law and under this proposed ordinance, do they have the, that, do they have the right just go out there without, uh, without, uh, getting a permit from the city and, and put the poles wherever the heck they want to put the poles?
Uh, no, uh, Councilman Davis, a permit is required. The advantage though, uh, if I may, the advantage of the ordinance that's in front of the council now over what would be under the state law is, uh, that it limits the number of applications of what, what we call batches, that how many applications that a company can file at the same time. And the reason that's important is, is that another change since twenty seventeen is that now there's a shot clock that applies to applications so that, so that if a city doesn't act on an application, uh, to co-locate within sixty days, uh, that the provider can take the city to court and try to get an order to approve the application. So, you know, it's, it's important for the city to be able to say to the companies, you can only file like ten applications at a time and you, and you have to wait ten days before filing batches because otherwise, even though there is, as you're saying, a permitting requirement, the, uh, city staff can get so overwhelmed that they're not able to really fully analyze all of the locations in the application.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Um, I, I'm less concerned about the height of the poles than I am about placement. Uh, I think in some ins- you could even argue that a thirty-five foot pole is better than a twenty-five foot pole in terms of, uh, being obtrusive. But, um, I, I'm happy to hear, uh, your comments on that. And, uh, we, we need, you know, we need to go ahead and act on this, uh, certainly before we are preempted by the legislature. And I would just hope that, that, you know, that it, that, that the reduced volume that we'll have to deal with will allow the city, uh, to, you know, monitor the placement of these within the confines of the federal law. Thank you, Flo.
Mountain City Club.
Sixty four zero one zero ordinance to rezone property located at nineteen oh one Hurtel Street from R one to R three.
Oh, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, yeah, I would like to, uh, say that, uh, last week, the, uh, council, um, the, uh, Rachel, uh, Jamie Roberts and, uh, some citizens had met at government class on, on last Tuesday uh, with the developer that came out, as you all noticed, had been a topic, uh, upon the, the news put in the past week. And, um, pretty much that the school board still had the property up for sale, but we have before us is the zoning. So I asked our attorney, uh, could we still go forth with the zoning, you know, of his property? And he did say yes. Um, the means of it, that the immediate neighbors, they're just more concerned, you know, make sure that they're security- The means of it that the immediate neighbors there just will, you know, make sure that their security is there as far as in lightning and the fencing. You know, and just make sure that it's just, you know, just know anybody that is just moving over there. They understand that something has to go over there because Mannings is pretty much a abandoned school is just sitting over there and pretty much people are going in the back of the school doing some bad things as far as in shooting and other activities and homeless people are living inside of the school. So the neighbors do understand that it has to be, you know, something has to go there. But they're just trying to make sure that some the best thing or the best project goes there in that particular space. Now, there is another group that's out there too that wants the same project, excuse me, the same property that this particular investor is trying to invest in too. And which is they out there want the property also and, you know, send out letters and also trying to get petition petitions signed and the several. But again, what's before us, you know, is is the zoning from R one to R three. And I do know this is gonna rest over a week, so I'm not too sure if anyone's gonna come down today and address this or if they're gonna give us a petition, petition today or or what. So I'm just pretty much gonna play this by ear, but just wanted to bring you all up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Zero eight zero eight three approved purchase order to Deer and Company for six John Deere utility vehicles. That's fifty eight thousand eight hundred twenty six thousand sixteen cents. Zero eight zero eight four approved purchase order to Florida Caribbean Cruise Association for annual membership, membership fifteen thousand dollars. Thirteen zero eight five authorized change order number two to the Contract of Harris Contracting Services for Rickery Park Grading and Drainage Improvement, nine thousand ninety two dollars. Thirteen zero eight six authorized contract change order number two of John G. Watson Construction for Baltimore Street um, street drainage, street and drainage rehabilitation from Ann Street to I sixty five Service Road, seventy two thousand six hundred ninety three dollars and ninety six cents.
Um, on this one, what 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 do we mean from Ann Street to I sixty five Service Road?
Uh, yeah. This is Nick. I can answer that. The the actual project actually does ju- jumps over Broad Street and does about a little two block. It's already done, a little two block section that goes to the I sixty five Service Road. So that's why it does that. That was a a partial rebuild where it got resurfaced sidewalks and curb and gutter.
So are you saying I one sixty five, I sixty five Service Road?
I'm sorry. It should it should have said I ten. That's just a that's a type of my my apologies.
Oh, I'm just really saying, I don't know how you're gonna get to I sixty five now for Ann Street.
We can't get there from here.
All right, okay.
Twenty one zero eight seven authorized contract with Grant Nichols Construction for construction of Old Shell Road Tap Sidewalk from Union Avenue to Highland Avenue, two hundred eighty thousand eight hundred three dollars and eighty cents.
All right. Can we can we move that one up because we running we running out of time on this one? Can we take this one up today? We're running out of time on. Go move, hold on. We'll get to that bit.
Twenty one zero eight eight authorized service contract with PHW Power Systems for emergency generators preventive maintenance and service various city facilities, eighty thousand eight hundred ten dollars. This is a three year total. Twenty one zero eight nine authorized contract with Gorman Air Condition for a dehumidifier replacement in the therapy pool room at the County Hudson Senior Center, twenty eight thousand four hundred sixty dollars. Twenty three zero nine zero accept the right of way for McGregor Avenue Widening Project. Twenty five oh, twenty five zero nine one accept a permanent sidewalk easement for USA for twenty twenty one citywide annual sidewalk repair and maintenance. Thirty seven zero nine three recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Cracker Barrel on Schilling Road South.
Lisa, I think you missed twenty five zero nine two.
I think so.
Oh, okay. Sorry, it was a run on. Twenty five zero nine two grant easement to Alabama Power Company for guy wire installation on Ziegler Boulevard.
That's because she wants to go to Cracker Barrel for their Hertel River. She's excited.
All right, Joel.
Forty zero nine four through forty one zero four are declaring structures, public nuisances, fixing the cost of structures. And fifty eight one zero five declare weed noxious weed lean group eleven sixteen eleven. Sixty one zero six determine an appropriation to the Excelsior Band serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty one zero seven determine an appropriation to the Village of Spring Hill serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty one zero eight approved settlement agreement and release of claims Aubrey Sawyer, Royal Reese and Michael and Robin Freeman. We're adding three. The sixty one zero nine determine an appropriation to the Mobile Botanical Gardens serves a public purpose and approved payment. Zero nine one one zero reallocate one hundred forty one thousand five hundred twelve dollars and nine cents from District Seven Capital Projects to Mobile Botanical Botanical Gardens. Twenty one one eleven authorized performance contract with Mobile Botanical Gardens, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Uh, yes, uh.
We can't hear you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, thank you.
I think he wants to add his appointment to the short term.
And and in that same vein, I've sent the name of my appointment as well. If we could add both of those names, it would be helpful.
Okay, sorry about that. My wife, I was off.
Okay, Lisa, Lisa, could we get the, could you get me those numbers?
Okay. Zero three one twelve. Okay, that's thirty.
Zero three.
Zero. Oh, I'm sorry, zero three, um, one twelve.
For both of them?
Yeah, yeah.
So so the ones we're gonna take up today are the thirty seven zero nine three, the liquor license, all of the public nuisances and demolitions and the discretionary distributions for Village Spring Hill, Excelsior Band, Mobile Botanical Gardens, the reallocation, the District Seven reallocation. I guess we have to. Gina, I guess we should, I guess we're gonna have to hold over both the reallocation and the performance contract since they're fit together, right?
Yeah, they fit together.
Yeah, okay. And then the zero three one one two appointments.
So real quickly, this is Ricardo Wood. Twenty one 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 is a management agreement rather than a performance contract that we're working on. The the Botanical Gardens one, twenty one 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 one.
That's a management. I thought that was just strictly a performance contract.
It it it's not. We don't want to have two documents. There's a there's a management agreement that we've been working on and.
And it will come with.
Again.
Will it come with a with a dollar figure as well?
It's the same. It's the same dollar figure. It's just a matter of nomenclature. I mean, instead of performance contr- performance contract, it's it's a management agreement. Same dollar number, but good question. What the one fifty?
Still still holds over. Yeah, right. Just change the wording, care do. Rose by any other name.
May I say?
Underground.
I heard you going.
All right. So I think we're ready. We're good, right?
I I have a question, though, of the administration. In the future, will this one fifty then be automatically programmed into the budget so that you you are you looking at this as above and beyond what we would do at the beginning of a fiscal year to have to have a council person go through their budgets and pull this funding together instead of it being a line item? So can we look forward to that in the future? I would hope it would help the gardens to know that.
Well, this is coming from a combination of my capital monies as well as. If you recall, last year I did the same thing.
Right.
I would like eventually to see the city through the budget and performance contracts be able to provide funding to the botanical gardens that would be comparable to what we give to other city managed facilities. I think what Ricardo was talking about in the management agreement, we have been working with the botanical gardens for a long time to try to come up with an agreement for the city to take over some of the maintenance at the gardens, very similar to what we do with other facilities.
Right.
Gardens could just do what they do, which is the gardens themselves. That should take off a lot of their financial strain, financial burden. So once we get that in place, then we'll know, you know, really how much then the city should come back and contribute in the way of a performance contract. And again, it's nothing different than what we do for other city facilities.
Right.
So, you know, so we're just looking at this, but right now, that's not in place. And for them to continue doing what they need to do with all of their maintenance needs and infrastructure needs, the only avenue is for me to continue cobbling or, you know, like I like I did last year and the year before that, actually.
Right.
To make sure that they are able to be sustainable. They have some opportunities for some grant money and things like that out there that are just waiting for us to get this plan in place. So, you know, I'm very happy that we were able to do this. But going forward, you know, I would really like to see things change up a little bit.
Right, that'd be good. Thank you.
Any other items, Madam Secretary of State?
It's all.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
The meeting next week will be held on Wednesday instead of Tuesday. Tuesday's a holiday.
Oh, and a reminder tomorrow at ten o'clock, the new fire station, station number eighteen, we'll we'll have a ribbon cutting at ten o'clock. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate a little bit better than it is today, but if it's rainy, we'll just move everything inside. So everyone's invited, ten o'clock tomorrow, the fire station, it's at the corner of McGregor and Museum Drive.
Great. So thank you both for those announcements and I hearing no further discussion. We will see each other at ten thirty. Bye.